Recording in progress.
All right. Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, May 7th. We'd like to invite everyone to our work session. Board members present in the boardroom are members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, and Bellamy. Also joining us, we have Dr. Bryant and we have our executive assistant, Ms. America Sullivan, along with a myriad of staff who are here to join us today. So with that, I'll call our meeting to order. We have, that brings us to item B on the agenda. Request for information. I mean, I think there in Board Connect, you have, there were several items listed in Board Connect on Friday that we're still working through. Other than that, does anyone wish to add an RFI today? Member Higgins?
Yes, I would like to see the impact if Picas Odom was adopted as a, for financial purposes, and we had the additional under system of teachers, what the capacity, how that would change in elementary to make sure that we're comparing it, what rightsizing is based upon current money, based upon if we can manage to build the teachers we got versus if we could fill the teachers. I know Inlet View, third grade, thirty kids in each classroom, that would be four classrooms. So, you know, from K three. So I think I just want to see the capacity, how that would change for what we're doing for elementary particularly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you get that?
Yes, we've captured it and I'd be happy to work with the team to process that. I can't commit to it for this week. It might take some analysis, but we can certainly make sure that's answered.
Okay. Any other requests, RFI's for today? All right. So we will add that to the list and the superintendent will and staff will get that back to us. All right. So I, today we have two items for discussion. Our first is the academies of Anchorage. And I see the team is here and smiling. So Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam President. So as noted, our topic today is the academies of Anchorage, and we are very excited to share the work of our tactic teams, our steering committee and our staff. So today, we're going to provide an outline of our progress to date on our master plan, give the board and the public a glimpse into the financial plan for this over the next several years, and also point out potential funding opportunities that could help steward this work for the longer term. So I'll hand it off to Dr. Johnson in team.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Happy to be here and I'm really excited to share this work with all of you today. I have the college career life ready team here. I have Cindy Chapoo, our director of college career and life ready work in the district, and I have Devin Roberts, our assistant director of career and technical education. So the three of us, along with a smaller team, have really been working hard on this, along with our community partners throughout this school year. So I'm excited to share with you where we're at. So looking at our goals for the work session today, Dr. Bryant indicated we really do want to show some funding, the funding path forward for the board around this work. But we also want to talk about how that coincides with the transformation process. And in that transformation process, we want to really preview the academies and pathways that have been recommended by the steering committee and our tactic teams. We want to talk about scheduling possibilities for the academies moving ahead, and we also want to talk about the community investment in the work thus far. And then lastly, our last goal for the session is to really outline where we are in the work process and planning process, and then really be specific about where the board input votes and decisions are so that you're really clear on the path ahead. So to start us off today, I just wanted to just take a step back from the details and just kind of remember why we set down this pathway for college career life ready work and why we chose academies as a good option for us in the district. So if you recall, one of the main reasons we are looking at an academies model is to raise our graduation rates. That's our number one goal and directly correlates with the school board goal around college career life ready and raising those graduation rates. We also really want to address workforce development with our students in our own community. So we want our kids to be prepared to go into the Anchorage community well-suited for the workforce or for technical training or for college going. And so we really want to connect the experiences that they have in our high schools to those opportunities that they have locally. We really also wanted to address equitable opportunities for students. When we were looking at the success rates of our college or career and technical education programs and how they equate to increase graduation and student engagement and attendance, only about a third of our students have those opportunities currently in our system, and we really wanted to expand those equitable opportunities across the district for kids. And then lastly, we really wanted to increase our student engagement, especially coming out of COVID. Post-COVID, our engagement has taken a dip and being engaged in your education is definitely going to take you further, and it's also a work, a work skill too, showing up on time, showing up on a regular basis and being really engaged in your work. So we want to increase that student engagement at the high school level as well. So I also will talk a lot about this further in the presentation, but I wanted to just reemphasize at the beginning that this has been a truly community-driven process, and it actually really started with, with the board. In 2020, when the board started their new strategic plan, there was a lot of community outreach about what those goals should be. And it's equated down to our community-driven process through developing, developing the academies of Anchorage. And you can see on this slide, there are thousands of people and hours that have been dedicated to that purpose, and I'll break this down a little bit further as we go along. But getting back to what our goal is, our goal is to develop a system that results in increased graduation rates. So our goal right now is to go from eighty-one percent graduation rate in two thousand twenty-three to ninety percent in twenty twenty-eight. And we really do believe that the system of academies in our school district and our community will really result in that. And the reason we feel that way is because we've seen results in other places, and we'll get into that as well. So looking at the transformation process, this is a little bit of a review. We've talked about this as a board, but we have partnered with Ford Next Generation Learning to help guide us through this process, and they've done this work across the country very successfully. And these are the three areas that they have really focused on when transforming a district and a community. The first one is transforming teaching and learning. The second category is transforming the culture systems and structures of schools. And then the last category of transformation is really around the partnerships with your community and between the community and the schools. And so it is a very different model than what traditional high school education has looked like, because those community partners are in your classrooms and our kids are out in in the community much, at a much higher rate than they are currently. And so as we go along today, I will expand on how these three categories are driving the work in the academies model. So I mentioned briefly earlier that we know this is a proven model across the country. There are many examples, but here are a few. Nashville, Tennessee is the first community that underwent this transformation over seventeen years ago and has been nationally recognized for their work. They are currently at a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. And over the last seventeen years, they've really refined the system and built their whole community around this system. They report lots of things outside of the school system too, such as a reduction in crime rates in our youth. They also attribute that to academies work and having kids more engaged in schools. So you can also see in Akron, Ohio, that there's been increased graduation rates there as well. They've risen their graduation rate by ten percent over the past six years. They have also seen an increase in their academic achievement through their state testing. And they've also seen a number of students increased in their industry certifications and college credits as they graduate from high school. So it gives them those skills to take to the next level post-secondary. And then Hampton, Virginia is another community. They are seven years into implementation. They are also at a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. That's up over twenty percent for that community in seven years. And so they've seen a number of other increases as well around GPA and attendance, and they haven't seen a significant decrease in their suspension rates too across the district. So I wanted to highlight this because I believe that many of these results could come to Anchorage through this model, and we'll talk a little bit more as we go on. So looking at the first component of transformation is around the teaching and learning. So changing the way we teach and learn in the classroom. And so the, the high-level concepts around this transformation are embedding project-based learning into our classrooms where students are given relevant and real-life problems to solve as they learn their concepts. And part of that project-based learning comes from a team of teachers as opposed to individual teachers and individual classrooms, and we'll dive into that as well. Another transformation, and I've mentioned it already, is looking at an increase in work-based learning where students are given those, those real-life situations that they would find in a field of work, and they're able to learn their concepts through them. They're able to job shadow. They're able to hear from folks in the industry. They're able to participate in internships potentially. And so there's a number of other ways that students could be involved through apprenticeships or pre-apprenticeships as well. So increasing those opportunities for our students across the board is really going to give them those, those skills as they transition. Another huge part of the academy's work is also expanding the college preparatory experience for students. So we're looking at opportunities to expand our IB, our AP and our dual credit, but also increasing our industry credentials as well. And sometimes those things go together. Sometimes you are in college-bound level coursework, but you're also achieving industry credentials at the same time. And so there's an expanded potential for students to participate in those opportunities through this model as well. So and a huge part that we've talked about before in the transformation of teaching and learning is around implementing our freshman academy this next fall in two thousand twenty-four and then launching those career academies in the fall of two thousand twenty-five. So looking more specifically at our freshman academy, that's our, our next step beyond making some decisions this spring. We, we are really in the throes of that, that planning work right now and working with our schools so that they're ready for, for our freshmen in the fall. So part of the freshman academy components are developing smaller learning communities through teams of teachers working together. So teachers who are in a, in a group together with language arts, social studies, math, science, and then their freshman academy career exploration course that will be implemented next fall. Those teams of teachers create that smaller learning community for students. So there's additional support for students in the transition of high school. It's a critical time for students. There's a lot of research that says if you have a successful freshman year as a student, you are more likely to graduate. So we really want to support that transition for our freshmen through this model. We also want to provide them with some really exciting experiences. Not only do we want them to participate in the freshman career exploration course where they will learn about career academies, they will do a lot of kind of self-exploration around who they are and what their self-interests or what their interests are. But there will also be things that they talk about around how, how do you kind of navigate high school as well. So it's really a specific course to support the transition, but also to really dive into the career exploration for students as well. So next year in our freshman year, we will maintain our six-period schedule that has semester course of freshman career exploration will be a semester course paired with Alaska Studies and the ancient civilization course that normally is there won't be taken by freshmen next year. We will make that social studies credit up as an elective later in their high school career. So they're still on a great path for graduation. But I just wanted to be clear that we're not changing the schedule for next year. The other thing that freshmen will get to do next year is visit a college campus with our partnership with University of Alaska Anchorage. So every freshman in our comprehensive high schools will get to go to UAA and really see what college is all about. For all of our first-generation collegegoers that are potentially in our high schools, this will be a really powerful experience for them to understand college. But the other side of things is really exploring the careers through a career expo. So we'll be able to get students really trying careers out, talking to professionals and seeing what, what they like and start to experience it in a real, a real tangible way. So every student next year in our conference of high schools will get to go to that career expo, and that expo is actually being sponsored in part by the municipality of Anchorage right now. So we, we will do a lot of work next year in our freshman academy about preparing kids to make a choice for career academies as well. So that's a significant part of that freshman experience as well. So they make a really good decision for them moving ahead. So looking ahead, this next slide, you also have a handout in front of you that's a little larger so that you can see it better. So this, this is a culmination of a lot of work that has happened this year. And so this is our draft of our academies and pathways at all of our high schools. So this, this document was contributed to in a, in a significant way with a lot of community input, business and industry input, workforce development input. And so everything that you see here, literally hundreds, maybe even thousands of hours have been dedicated towards developing this. So before I get into the details of this, what I wanted to also point out to the board around this work is there's been a very strategic and intentional effort put into using the resources that we already have. So I'm talking about things like curriculum around career technical education. So we've really taken a look at what our programs are that are successful that we want to maintain through the academy's work. So we're not buying new curriculum per se. We're not retraining teachers who have a successful program that kids really are invested in, and that is a cost savings and an efficiency in this model. The other big piece of our strategic planning has been around facilities. So when you think about career and technical education, a lot of times you think about space for students to do certain activities, but also the equipment to go with it. We've done very strategic and intentional work around placing academies in facilities that have a lot of things in place already. So for example, we did not put a construction trades academy in a space that didn't have the, the facility for that. So typically, if you're in a construction academy or a construction-oriented class, it requires a bigger space. You need tall ceilings. You might need some outdoor storage. Those are not things that we can build over a summer to launch a career academy or secure funding for right away. And so we've done a very intentional work to place those things appropriately across our district so that we use the investments that have already been seen by the district with our facilities. So as you look here at the, at the chart, you'll see the high schools across the top and underneath them, you'll see in bold the different academies that have been selected. And then underneath those bolded categories are italicized pathways. So within those academies, there are multiple pathways that students can engage in. And those pathways and academies are all based on workforce data. Workforce data from our Department of Labor, workforce data from AEDC, workforce data from many different individual industries, and all of that information was compiled to start a good ratio of academies and pathways that match that workforce data. So for example, you'll notice at the eight comprehensive high schools that every high school has a health science pathway in some capacity listed there. That's because, excuse me, that's because in our workforce data, there is a significant need for healthcare in our community. And so the data supports us having that many pathways across our district. You'll, you'll notice that there may be only a couple engineering pathways. Engineering is, is a field that's definitely needed, but we don't need eight pathways to match the workforce data as an example. And so those were, those were chosen more specifically at individual schools. So that's just a, a kind of an example of how the workforce data matches what you see here amongst our schools. The other thing I want to really point out about the, the system that you see on this chart is that King Tech and AMCS are still robust options for our high school students in this model. King Tech has done, has really paved the way for a lot of this work. There are strong relationships there. Very robust programs, and we want those to continue. And we also want those to be additional CTE choices for students in addition to the academies that are happening at the eight different high schools. So if a student wants a more intensive experience at King Tech, they still absolutely have that option. And they would still be able to attend for half of their, their schedule and, and benefit from that. The other thing about King Tech is there are some programs there that we will not be able to offer at every high school due to the facilities that King Tech has already. So automotive maintenance is a big one that we probably can't build an auto shop at every high school right now. And so we really want to utilize that facility well for students, but that's really their niche. Additionally, for AMCS, we have a strong partnership with that program with UAA. We have lots of successful graduates, and we really do have students who are ready for that next college experience. So if they really want the more college-going experience of going on campus and being a part of the UAA campus, they can still do that through AMCS. That doesn't mean we're not going to build up those opportunities at the eight high schools as well, but it gives kids that much more choice in how they're, they're executing their education. So the one, the other thing that I really want to point out on this chart, and I'm sorry that I keep kind of camping out here. There's a lot to explain, is that when you look at every pathway on this, this graph, you will, I want, I would like to key in that there is a entry-level job experience out of each of these pathways, all the way up to a college-going experience for each of these pathways. So as students enter into the, the chosen pathway that they choose, they are able to navigate with the coursework within that academy for what, what they want their end goal to be. So some students may need to go straight to work so that they can earn a living right out of high school and maybe the pay for college while they're going along the way, right? And so we want to give those opportunities to them so that they have that entry-level industry credential that they need. Maybe they have a few credits under their belt and they're able to go straight to work and accomplish that. Or maybe they want to go straight to college and they know that that's really their pathway, and they're able to choose their classes within that pathway for that pathway as well. So, so I just wanted to point out that there is a lot of choice in this model for students. We're not tracking students in one way or another. And so with that, I think I will go to the next slide, and Madam President, please stop me if you want to pause for any questions.
Any hands? Oh, yes, I do. Member Lessons?
Um, thank you for all of this work and really diving into the presentation. I look forward to the rest of it. One of the questions that I have, and maybe, I mean, it's, it's coming right off of what you were saying, that you can have entry level to college access points within each pathway. This closer. To what extent would AP coursework be considered CTE-eligible, right? If you go, if you have a business pathway of some sort or a health pathway of some sort? AP Statistics or AP Biology? I mean, there are things that seem like it could be very relevant for your intended career trajectory that really offers a yes and approach, right, to the pathways?
Yeah. So that's, that's part of the choice that you have in your schedule. So like what? And, and a lot of times it depends on the industry, how those things merge together. So I, and I will probably have Devin kind of dive into this a little bit too, but like, I like to use the example of like AP Computer Science. It's an advanced placement course, but it's also considered a CTE course because you're learning about science, computer science. Differently, if you were in like a project management course or a business administration course, you may take a CT-oriented course around those, but then have supporting classwork around that. So if I was in business, I would probably be looking at high-level math classes as a part of that and maybe some high-level other types of classes to support the business management kind of direction of my education.
I guess if I could just follow up clarification. So if I am really focused on earning my AP credits because I want to get ahead in college, and I think I'm going to pass my AP classes with a three or higher, and can I use that AP Computer Science class as my pathway? Like, can I, like, does that check the box?
It does. Yeah.
Okay. So, so a totally focused college-bound student is going to be able to use an applicable AP credit for their pathway completion?
They could. Yes. There will likely be introductory courses in the trajectory of the CTE pathway. Like, I'm thinking of like a health science pathway. There may be an introduction course before you get to AP Biology as, as an example. Or if you're in a project lead-the-way biomedical science kind of pathway, there may be some specific There may be some specific courses that aren't necessarily AP. But you're probably really going to want to take AP Chemistry, Human Anatomy, AP Biology. And other courses that are really on that trajectory to college bound. So, anything you want to add, Devon?
Okay, so a- along with that, I just got a question. Um, what is today Tuesday, yesterday? So, the, for, for athletes, right, they have to have. Certain number, an amount of, I mean, they have to qualify, right?
Right.
Um, to get those scholarships, uh, that, how is that built into this system?
Sure, and some of, some of it.
I guess the question really was, does the academy, the work they do in the academies count for? The, yeah, uh, what did, what do they call?
N C double A.
N C double A, yeah.
I, I knew where you were going. Um, so what I would say is that there will be some of those courses that will count for N C double A. And some that will, when you look at N C double A requirements, it's usual, it's definitely more geared toward traditional subjects. So there are credits required around English and social studies, science, math. Um, and, and those are the classes that will be a part of the academy's um team. So you would still get those things as a part of this model.
Okay, cool.
Uh, member Wilson. So I know there's been discussion about um looking into registered pre-apprenticeship, registered apprenticeship. Um, can you maybe talk a little bit about the potential for registered apprenticeship programs? And, and I look at King Tech specifically, could that become like a registered apprenticeship high school?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to actually ask Devon to talk to this because he's been kind of deep in the weeds with that work um as the C T E director. And um, it's definitely a grant opportunity that we'll talk about when we get to the funding piece as well. Um, and so it's, it's a, a very viable opportunity for us as a district through this model. So I'll turn it over. Devon.
Um, yes, thanks for the question. Um, so we're, we're looking at um registered apprenticeship programs typically um require. Uh, paid work is one of the elements. There's all sorts of other great things about registered apprenticeships. But um, but primarily one of the things that's required is, is that you're providing a wage to participants. That's kind of commensurate with their skill level and as of course they skill up, those wages should increase as well. So we're primarily, the focus has been looking at pre-apprenticeship programs that have some of those same. Um, qualities, um, wraparound services, um, um, the technical training. Um, and, and we're looking at building out um some pre-apprenticeship programs into pathways. Um, appropriate pathways for, for the, um, that then lead to or could lead to registered apprenticeship programs. Because most registered apprenticeship programs are, um, are for adults and you typically need to have a partner who will pay for the, the um. Pay for the apprentices uh to work. Um, a couple of the things specifically to give you one concrete example. Um, we have a partner, Alaska Primary Care Associates, and they have a number, seven different registered apprenticeships in the health sciences fields. Um, ranging from pharmacy tech to clinical medical assistant to um community health worker. And so those um, we're, we're looking at working with them in order to build pre-apprenticeship programs. Um, in partnership with them, um, so that our students are able to um get certifications their junior and senior year. And if they wish to go for the registered apprenticeship program, they can then matriculate into that. Um, one of the things we're also looking at is that we, we do have the possibility and we do have a need for uh paraprofessionals in our district. And so there is a possibility that the district itself could become a registered apprenticeship program. Um, and we've explored that both in the areas of education and I T because we hire I T folks um that we also need. So those are a couple of the things that we've, we've been looking at in terms of how to integrate. Uh, pre-apprent, pre-apprenticeship and, and registered apprenticeships into the system.
Yeah, and I would just add that that's the tip of the iceberg, quite honestly. Um, there's a huge amount of potential for um a pre-apprenticeship programs through this work. And ultimately, what I would love to see as a part of our work through the academies is that when students get to their junior, senior year. If they know apprenticeship is the right fit for them, that we start pointing in that direction. So that they are that much further ahead when they graduate from us. Because if they've made those networking connections with employers and, and training programs. Then they're more likely to socially move upward to, if they're in a low socioeconomic. But um, of course, they're not necessarily going to get um like a gap in their, their job training. They, they will have a better direction. Um, and there's a lot of potential for us to pay kids for work. So rather than them working at, you know, the coffee shop down the street, we have them in, in a, a professional trajectory. Um, that they're moving ahead in. So there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity there.
Yeah, I, I'd also like to say like there's tremendous amounts and it's sort of a, um, a real. Um, obvious area uh to explore in terms of construction trades. We have a tremendous number of those. Um, we work very closely with Alaska Works Partnership and so developing pre-apprenticeships for our construction trades programs is something that's also very high on our, our priority list as well.
And, and that's where the workforce development building comes through this model is through that type of work as well, so.
Um, yeah, go on.
Um, I counted uh a quick tally of sort of pathways within each school. And based on my general understanding of our enrollment, it looks like we're putting about two hundred kids or so per pathway. Are they going to be capped? And if so, what happens if four hundred kids want to be in Pathway A? And one hundred kids want to be in Pathway B?
Yeah, that's part of the, um, so what I will say, just to back up a step, is part of the work that we did around this, this model. Maybe we can just go back to the, the slide. Um. So when, when we look at all the academies and how they're placed, um, and an additional input into the system. That um I didn't mention earlier is student and parent surveys. There was um over ten thousand respondents to those surveys. And they were from all corners of our district. So we really um focused on our student and parent surveys and developing this as well. Because we want it to be built around student interests and we also want our parents to be um supportive of the pathways that we're offering as well for their kids. Um, because those are our stakeholders. And so um, we, some of that is in consideration to what you see here. So we, we have a picture of what kids are interested in in combination with what the workforce demand is. But to get more specific, each of these pathways is not necessarily an even number across the board. So some of these pathways are smaller. The smallest um pathway that you'll see is about ninety students um on average. And the largest pathway that we have built in the system is two hundred and fifty. And those were based on um school recommendations and also on workforce data. There was a hu- kind of a happy medium there in our process. Schools um did initial proposals. The tactic team that was really working on this from our industry professionals gave feedback on those proposals. Schools went back to work and then came with a second proposal to finalize what you see here. So it was a very iterative and involved process over the course of the last five months. Um, with our schools and our industry professionals that were helping us. And so um, it, it really, it was a very complicated science to get to the numbers, if you will. So um, we have, we've done some of that preliminary work, but then when we actually get to reality. So we're la- launching those career academies and we're looking at course requests. When students sign up for things and they sign up for particular academies, we'll be able to make adjustments based on that as well through the process. And that's a normal part of our scheduling process anyways, as we balance our classes across the school. So we'll be able to make some of those internal adjustments if we have a flux um with our students.
Follow up? Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, just looking left to right, so I'm going to pick on Bartlett and Chudjak uh because they're alphabetical. Um, if I'm a freshman at Bartlett and I go through my freshman academy. And at some point in that, we look at um the pa- the different options. Um, and I say, oh my goodness, I really want to do um culinary and hospitality management. And that's not offered at Bartlett, but it's offered at Chudjak. Do I need to transfer schools between my freshman and sophomore year to do that?
Potentially, yeah. So, so there's a couple of options in that scenario. Students at Bartlett that want that experience could also access King Tech and stay at their high school. So there's some flexibility there to still get the pathway that they're interested in without having to change home schools. But we also would use our normal lottery process around this work as well. Um, I'm going to get into some of that kind of logistical, um, kind of like inner workings of the system. Um, in, as we go along in the presentation, but um, I think it's important for the board to, to understand around those choices. That when communities um develop this academy model, typically less than five percent of students opt to change schools. Based on an academy, because there's still a lot of things at school that kids are connected to. And typically, if you look at the choices, there's a breadth of choices for students. That was a big part of the planning and strategic work that we did as well. Is thinking about all different types of kids, all get different kinds of learners. And having a good amount of choices for students at their home high school so they stay connected.
All right, let's uh move on with the, oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I was, was going to wait till the end, but since we're already on the slide, um. Thank you for the presentation. Looking forward to the rest of it. I'm sorry to keep us logged down in the details there so early, but. Um, and if this was already addressed, I missed it, just let me know. What was the line of thinking that got us to four academies at Diamond? Um, I'm looking at just the capital improvement plan. It's one of the smaller high schools that are at eighty-eight percent capacity. Um. Yeah, how, how did we get there?
Sure, it, it's a great question. It, it goes back to the um kind of member lessons question where I was talking about different sized ac- um pathways. So when Diamond presented their proposal to us, um, there was, there was a lot more variety in the interest levels at Diamond. And what they were presenting to us in their, their proposal. And so what Diamond has opt, opted to do is have um multiple smaller academies instead of fewer larger um academies. Um, and so that's why you see four different academies at Diamond, even though it's a smaller school than some of the others that are on this, this chart. So for example, um, their law and public service pathway and their education pathway. Those are both smaller pathways of about ninety students to a hundred and fifty students.
Follow up, yeah, so that was driven by Diamond administration?
It was, it wa- it was a driven by both the tactic team and the workforce data, but also the school's proposals. So it's with that part um at Diamond specifically is based on that parent and survey and staff input um that was received.
And then one of the last call, yep, um. I was looking at the, kind of a, alluding to something number lessons was touching on regarding. And then I think a data point you mentioned, Dr. Johnson, about um, well, we have these different pathways at different schools. Majority of students will pick the best pathway for them at their local neighborhood schools. Um. With that said, it, I'm wondering how we got to the point where there isn't a. Um, industry and construction academy in the Chud- Chudjak Eagle River area. I want to say one of the larger labor unions actually has their training facility out in the Chudjak area. As I'm just wondering if that's a. Yeah, any more information on, on that dis- disentery?
Yeah, uh, in, at Chudjak, um, the, the first pathway under Academy of Business and Innovation is Construction Technology and Equipment. Operation. Um, so that is actually one of the key things that Chudjak brought to us was the Laborers Union is right there. It's a fantastic training facility and they, they have a, a great proximity to it. Um, and so they really want to utilize that partnership um around that academy or pathway, I should say. And um, they've actually already started having those conversations locally at the school.
Thank you.
Good. All right, so let's continue with the presentation.
Sure. Um, so going back to, um, I know s- uh, kind of a, a question that's been bubbling up. Both in the community and with the board is around that um college preparatory experience. I know we've touched on it, but I just wanted to kind of bring us back to it. That um academies do prepare students for college. And um, we've, they do so by increasing dual enrollment or dual credit opportunities, I D and A P course expansion. And some of that has to do with the schedule, which we'll dive into here in a little bit. Um, but essentially, the schedule change that we will talk about will drive extra opportunities for students around college preparatory. But also additional opportunities for students within a schedule. And so um, I, I will talk about that in, in detail. But by providing additional opportunities for students, we will see them accelerate faster, be better prepared. And the other part about um the schedule change is really looking towards a block schedule. And if you think about college, not, you don't go to class every day at college. You don't have the same class every day at the same time. And so by having that block schedule at the high school level, it really prepares them for that, that next level of college and how to navigate that, that schedule. Um, and then just thinking more holistically about how we're teaching at the high school level through project-based learning. And that collaboration that's happening and that work-based learning. Students are really focused on critical thinking, problem solving and teamwork. Those are all really highly valued skills at the college level. Um, they're also valued in the workplace. Um, but in terms of a college preparatory experience, that is a, a valuable skill set to have going to your post-secondary college experience. So looking ahead, I know that um equity of access across our system and transportation is also an interest area. Um, and so I wanted to just talk a little bit more about that beyond some of the questions we've discussed. Um, so the first level of equity of access from our plan is that every student has an opportunity to participate. In the academy model across our schools. So right now, about a third of our students are participating in career and technical education coursework. We also know that those students are graduating at a higher rate, they are attending at a better rate. Um, and have just essentially better um foundation for moving to the next um level as, as adults. And so that's part of the reason we've really looked towards this model about how do we provide those um increased odds. I would say for our students to reach success across our system. So the first part of our equitable access around this work is providing that opportunity for all kids in our district. So the second part of this work would be around the transportation. And like I noted earlier, in other communities that have done this work, it's about five percent or less of our students. That would, would opt to choose a different academy just for um and, and change schools through that lottery system. And so um, we're talking about a small number of students. But the other part of this is, as I indicated earlier, King Tech is an option for variety. So if there is a, a pathway at King Tech that is more interesting to a student than their pathway at their home high school, they would be able to stay put. And we already have the transportation provided in King Tech to access those robust programs. But we also, in our second phase of planning, would stand up a transportation tactic team for us to really evaluate that. And, and decide how we are going to uh recommend a, a pathboard for that in our district. And, and part of the reason I don't have a, a, a solid plan yet is, is really about logistics. We, we couldn't really plan transportation until we knew where those academies were going to be, right? And so um, now that we have a draft and we're, we're getting close to that um, that decision point for the board to adopt that master plan. Um, once we have that approval, we can get to work on that next phase of planning. So um, when we do look at that planning, we will look at um optimizing our bus routes to keep things efficient. We'll also work um on public transportation partnerships with People Mover. Um, we've already had some initial conversations about returning bus stops to our local high schools. Not all of our high schools have a People Mover bus stop any longer. So those are, those are conversations and efficiencies and, and funding items that we can consider and bring to the board in the next phase of planning. So um, looking ahead and transitioning from uh the transformation of teaching and learning. To transforming culture systems and structures of schools. That's the second category of transformation in this work. Um, as I indicated earlier, there's a schedule change needed to make academies of Anchorage successful. Um, and it really is the foundational decision um around creating a system that works in the academies of Anchorage. And so if you, we've talked about the four core traditional courses. Plus that C T E or academies course that is needed to create that system of academies of Anchorage. And that essentially equates to five required classes for a student. Instead of the four traditional ones that we think of with language arts, math, science and social studies. And so when we look at adding a, a required course, that requires the schedule change. So that we can maintain all of those robust options and electives that students really love. Such as fine arts, world languages, J R O T C, all of those things that um students really look forward to in high school. We want to maintain that for students because for a lot of students, that's what drives them. So when we look at changing a schedule at our high schools, it does provide a lot of other opportunities to beyond academies. And so it provides additional elective opportunities for students. So I know, like, if you have a student like my daughter who takes an online class, so she can take an art class during the school day. Those students would be able to do that all during the school day with a, a schedule change. And there are many high school students that, that do those options. Um, so we would. So we would be able to create those options within their day. We also would be able to support students differently in a daily schedule. So for our students who need credit recovery. Or for our students as a preventative measure who struggle in a particular subject, we would be able to offer. Support courses during their day as opposed to paying additional. Funding for summer school or other credit recovery opportunities. We would be able to embed those right in our daily schedules. So there's an opportunity there for us. And as we've talked about with our our additional elective opportunities. Looking at acceleration for students, if we have students who are really passionate about a particular area like science or. Math, or they really like to write, they would be able to participate in additional enrichment opportunities around those different subjects as well. So diving into the schedule a little bit more, there's a lot to a schedule and I know this is kind of little, so I apologize. But the the schedule change for the academies of Anchorage is truly the ecosystem that makes it work. And without that schedule change, then we will not have the system that we're aspiring to have in our district. And so I just wanted to make that point really clear, because it really drives all the change that we're talking about. So when we look at a schedule change and and teaming teachers together through the academies. We are essentially creating learning, smaller learning communities for students and teachers. And and that in turn really drives improved climate and connectedness in our schools. If you think about those large high schools. Across our district, that getting connected for some students in that large environment can be challenging. And by creating those smaller learning communities of teens within the school, you you create that smaller system that they can be connected to in a larger ecosystem. Of a high school. So it also allows for a reduction of burnout by both teachers and students. Because teachers and students really get to know each other on those teams. And in addition to those different schedules. They have a better pacing through a block schedule of homework and for teachers for grading. So we'll get into what that looks like in a block schedule where you are potentially only attending four classes a day. Instead of six all at once. And so that allows for that pacing for both homework for students, but also grading for teachers. So the the smaller learning community, to me, the real benefit is that improved relationship and collaboration. So improved relationships between students and teachers, but also improved relationships and collaboration amongst teacher colleagues. They have the time in that schedule, much like our middle school teachers do now with collaboration time to work together. And and they really know their group of students that they all share. And so they're able to really improve those relationships with each other as colleagues. But also with their students. And then the other part about a schedule change is really benefiting from fewer transitions in our schools. So you have less passing time where learning's not occurring, right? Or maybe hopefully not the wrong kind of learning is happening in passing. But but whenever you put a lot of students in a hallway and you have those transitions in a high school, that's time that could be used for instruction. And so by blockings, are using that block schedule, you eliminate passing times in the day to a certain extent. And and you can use that time for instruction. And not only just the time in the hallways, but if you can think about the transition of twenty-five or thirty bodies in a classroom. In and out and the time it takes a teacher to settle that class, get started, but then also to dismiss them, you save that time in classrooms as well. So you really are able to capture some of that time back for really deep learning in the classroom. The other thing that I I've touched on is really about that effective teaming and innovative teaching. So if you create that time for teams with teachers. And that professional work that really you can't do unless you have the time to meet with each other. I can't. Do a lesson plan with a teacher down the hallway unless we are able to find that common time during the day to really do that work. And it also creates a larger space of of time in a classroom to really dive into project-based learning. So project-based learning is really about just that, doing the work around a project. And so that requires more deeper thinking, a longer process for setting up and 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 taking down. And it requires collaboration amongst students because you're working in teams typically in project-based learning quite a bit. And so having that time to dive deep into a subject is really important in this model as well. And then I think that the, we've talked about this, but increased choice for students is a huge part of this ecosystem around a schedule change. Not only for supporting students who are struggling, but also supporting students before they even struggle. So they don't struggle to begin with. We're able to give them what what they need. So if you can think about win time for high school, that additional period in the day essentially can be that. For our schools, get what I need. And then if you think about the acceleration and enrichment for students, there's a lot more opportunity. For students to take additional electives that they're interested in, to be more well-rounded. And or to accelerate their IB and AP experience or dual credit experience and to really build that resume for college if they want.
Okay, I have a question, but I'm going to say I found an answer to one of my questions already. And I wanted to set that up for the record. One of my concerns in thinking about the pivot to a potentially different schedule is that if you. And I've shared this a little bit, you know, if under the current model of fifty-five minutes a day and of course. Over the week, you know, it's about five hundred and fifty minutes plus transitions in a two-week period. Pivoting to a different schedule of ninety minutes, you know. Five ninety-minute blocks over the two-week period is a is a reduction of about a hundred minutes. So I understand that part of that time is kids coming and going and getting settled down and getting packed up again. But I did look, I dug into college board materials and the suggested pacing for an AP class. As far as I could tell, from AP US history to AP calculus, it was about forty-five minutes a day. So that alleviated my concern. I I shared that, you know, in a history class, we're never going to get our students past the Nixon administration.
Right.
That because of the reduction in time over the duration of the school year. So this seems like it could align with sort of national expectations for for minutes in a classroom.
Yeah.
But one of my questions that I just want to share so other people could hear the answer, and let's pick Diamond because it's got the most number of. Opportunities and scheduling challenges. If I'm taking. If there are thirty or more students taking AP calculus B C, let's just say it's a narrow focus. And they want to, somebody wants to be in engineering and somebody wants to be in the Academy of Business and Information Technology and another person in that same class wants to be. In the Law Public Safety Education Academy and another person wants to be in the Comprehensive Health Sciences. You know, how does. Kids in a who want to take us an important specialty class. Maybe it's, so maybe it's that, maybe it's your book, maybe it's jazz band.
Yep.
That singleton class, maybe there's only one offered in the in the day. So if you're, if you've got kids attending four different academies. Can they access that singleton class?
Yeah, it's a great question, number lessons. So.
The mastery of master schedule.
Yeah, master schedule is like a a big puzzle. Is kind of how I.
Middle school all the time.
Right. So so the one thing I will say about teams, when we're looking at the four core subjects plus your CTE class being a team. Is that often math is the exception to that team. So I'll use the AP calculus example. So we know that math is much more sequential than some other subjects and so and and students have different capacities. For for where they are in math. And so if they're a high-level math student and are in our. Honestly, our highest level math class that we teach, AP calculus B C. We would essentially allow cross-academy scheduling, if that makes sense. So that math teacher that has that one class would be able to serve all the kids and all the academies for that particular course. So there would be those scheduling intricacies that we would do behind the scenes. More generally, though, if we're looking at like an Algebra One course or a geometry course that is more common that students take. And it's offered multiple times a day, we would try to concentrate those teachers who have a bigger. I I guess breadth of kids within an academy on that one particular team. So does that make sense?
Yeah, I think what I I appreciate that. This is the sort of handholding that I think. Parents and students and me will value. So it sounds like within each team, you would embed. And you might have four algebra teachers.
Right.
At Diamond in within each of the academies.
Exactly.
I don't know.
Yeah, we might have for for algebra teachers, for geometry teachers and for algebra two teachers that all serve one particular academy as an example. Those are the three probably most common courses offered at our high school level, but some of our other courses like AP calculus. Or AP statistics, those those would probably go across our academies in our scheduling. But we we wouldn't put roadblocks in front of kids to say you can't advance into that high-level course just because you're in this particular academy. Nobody wants to do that.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Minister President. Well, we talk about the, and maybe as we address the different proposals that I know are coming. A question that came up, you know, when I was just doing some Google research. Seemed to indicate that the block scheduling, when you have the the hyper-focus on the four periods per day. And a AB block schedule can disproportionately impact students who have attendance challenges. And we've talked a lot about this year, our chronic absenteeism rate. We know the rates of. Chronic absenteeism, specifically in the groups that we're trying to focus on improving academic outcomes, where those two are tied together. And so I guess the two questions I have, which we can address now or during other slides are, are we. Will this change potentially negative impact the students who right now are struggling that we want to improve outcomes in? And then two. To what extent has our Title VI office weighed in on the schedule change specifically?
Sure.
Thanks.
So I'll I'll answer it kind of in parts. I, so our high schools currently, all eight of our high schools are on a modified block schedule already. So it's not quite as as long of a mod a block schedule as our. Potentially seven or eight period day that we'll talk about. But we do have three days a week block periods already built in. So I I would answer that we already are kind of in that system of block scheduling. This would take it a little bit further. So that we can build in those blocks of times for other things like internships down the road as well. But attendance is going to affect your academic achievement no matter what. To be honest, whether you're in a traditional six-period every-day schedule or if you're in a block schedule. Part of the work that we are doing around this is to really do a lot of community and family outreach. And we have a whole tactic team engaged in that work, which Title VI staff is a part of. And along with many others in our district, like children in transition. Our Tony Riley is involved in that work. Our special education ELL staff are all involved in this particular tactic team. And the goal of that tactic team is to really address not only attendance, but how we're getting messages out to the community and our families. And really engaging some of those subpopulations that do struggle with school. So it's hard for me to predict what would happen, but but I do believe that we have our eye on that ball, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you, Minister President. Appreciate that. And I'm glad it's being, it's an area of focus. You know, I want to say from my individual meeting on the topic that the the financial ask going forward is pretty reasonable. If increasing that ask helped us accommodate for what we think will be, even if it's a a smaller. But it's still a measurable impact to students who have who categorized or categorized as chronically absent. If there's an after-school solution or a weekend solution to ensure that we're providing those supports for those kids. If we need to build it and now I would rather do that than be sitting here a year recognizing that outcomes went down in a group that we. Were trying to focus on because we further ingrained kind of the block scheduling, which again, the data seems to be clear that it negatively impacts. Students who are chronically absent because you you miss so much more, miss some, you know, two classes, two classes for every day. So just wanted to flag that now. Thanks.
I appreciate.
All right, let's continue.
Okay, if we can, I wanted to dive in a little bit to the scheduling models on that. These are just two examples. The one thing I will just talk about a little bit before we dive into the examples is that. Our our planning process is to stand up a committee of stakeholders around looking at our schedule. So that that work is already in the works for being planned. Eric Backman, our Senior Director of High Schools, is going to lead that conversation. In the district and will look at multiple models of schedules of and how they can accommodate the academies' work and the outcomes that we're looking for. But I wanted to just give you two examples that are potentials for the academies' work looking ahead. One is the eight-period A B rotating schedule where students have four classes a day. So one day would be what we call an A schedule day, the next day would be a B schedule day. And within a two-week block of time, classes meet for equal minutes in that model. The seven-period day, the next example with a skinny period essentially has three courses that rotate. On an A schedule and three courses that rotate on a B schedule. And then there's a seventh period. Or it could be a first period, depending on how we structure it, that meets daily, because that odd class. Is is difficult to schedule in in that block. So you you meet that, that class meets daily while the rest of the courses. Meet on an A B block schedule. So let me show you what those look like in in reality for a student when they're. We're scheduling. So this is the eight-period A B day. And so you can see one period or one day. Students go to periods one through four in a block schedule format. And then the next day they go to their periods five through eight. And then they just kind of repeat that cycle over the course of two weeks. And then if you look at the seven-period day with a skinny period, you can see that seventh period, here we placed it next to lunch. It meets daily, but the other courses on the different days are blocked. So you would have Monday, periods one, two, three, and then Tuesday, periods four, five, six, and then your seventh period meets daily. So these are just two examples that the committee will likely consider, but also meet the needs of the academy for that additional coursework. That we're proposing.
Any question? Keep going.
All right, so we've talked a little bit around the funding, but with a schedule change and the importance of that. Also be becomes a an ask financially. And so I wanted to walk through that. So the board goes into the decision-making with eyes wide open. But first I wanted to back up a little bit and just talk about, we are currently in phase one of the funding. With fifteen million dollars of our Department of Education Fostering Diverse Schools grant that's secured. So this funding is already set to launch and and support our freshman academy efforts in the fall. So there's no additional expenditures needed for FY twenty-five currently. So the funding that is secured right now will pay for not only the planning and and process that we're engaged in. But it'll also pay for a tremendous amount of professional development for our teachers to support the transformation. Work that they will do in this new system. And so we have those professional development days planned. Just about every minute of PD for the next school year is dedicated towards the academies' work for our teachers. So they feel really solid instructionally going into that fall of twenty-five launch with the career academies. It also pays for for freshman academy principals. There are some of our schools that have two assistant principals. And with this additional focus on the transition, we really wanted that leadership. And so for our schools that did not have a large AP staff, we've built into the grant additional AP to support that work. We also have built in our eight academy coaches into this grant. So those those folks have been working already this year. And and have been really instrumental in being a connector between the planning work at the district level. And the local school level planning that's happened. And they've worked hand-in-hand with their principals around all of that planning work that's going on. They'll continue to do a lot of that work next year, but eventually their role will change and be much more of a coordinator between our business partners. And the academies and the teachers themselves at the school level. And it also will help us pay for. Um, and it also um will help us pay for things like busing to go to the Career Expo that I mentioned earlier. In freshman academy and to go to UAA for a college campus visit. So there are some of those things. That the grant also um provides funding for. So that grant is for five years um until twenty twenty-eight. I believe, do I have that right Cindy? Okay, just making sure. And um and then I um also just wanted to highlight, um, the premise of the grant is fostering diverse schools. And so when we wrote the grant, it was really about providing equitable access to CTE across our district. And so that if if there is a shift in that um from this level, that does put that grant at risk. And I think it's important to note that. Um, so looking at phase two funding, this is the where the financial ask comes for the schedule change that we discussed. That's essential to the work. So uh we estimate that there's about thirty new um teaching positions that will be needed to execute a six-of-eight schedule. And that's what this phase two funding is based on is the six-of-eight schedule. That doesn't mean other schedule options couldn't be considered, but they would be more expensive. Um, so when we're looking at the finances, we're trying to be as judicious as possible in in our path forward. And so um we've we've chosen to model our financing off of that six-of-eight schedule because it is more affordable as we're looking at the additional FTE. So we, like I said, it's about thirty new teaching positions across our eight um high schools to accommodate. Um, the six-of-eight schedule so that we can really build in that extra course for students while still building in a lot of opportunity as well. So it's really an investment in creating a new system for our students. That not only encompasses the academy's work, but a lot of other opportunities for our students. Um, I will say um in that shift of schedule, there are some opportunities for cost savings around credit recovery as well. Um, so you'll note on the third question there, um. We talks a lot about the funding that's associated with summer school and credit recovery. We spend about one point seven million dollars annually. On summer school and online credit recovery. Um, communities that have engaged in a schedule change and an academy's model have seen a significant reduction in the need for that particular funding. Because they're able to build it into the system. And so while we would be investing initially in that extra thirty FTE. We will likely see reductions in um other uh costs associated with providing credit recovery. And and extra repetitive courses that students have to take. So looking ahead to phase three funding, um, this is where there's a lot of opportunity for us as a district. It's it's almost like if you build it, they will come kind of situation. So we've talked a lot about the different opportunities and funding is definitely an opportunity for us in this in this transformation model. So because of the work we've done with the Fostering Diverse Schools Grant um with the US Department of Education. They are very interested and positive around the work that we have been doing um in this this project and with this grant. And um they are really interested in continuing to support us. They've approached us multiple times over the course of the last several months. To apply for additional grant funding through the Department of Education. That could be upwards of seventeen and a half million dollars over five years that would offset some of the investment that we would make. Through um the schedule change. Um, so the granted that they're really interested in us applying for is called the Magnet Schools Grant. And it would essentially um talk about the academies as a magnet school opportunity for students within our community. But it would help us offset the investment that we're making um through grant funds um if we were to realize um that grant. So it's a huge opportunity um for us and um. And there's a high likelihood with that we would receive those funds given that we were approached to apply for them. The other thing that is a huge opportunity for us is a lot of uh grant work around workforce development, particularly aimed at youth. Um, so in this model, uh we we have a lot of opportunity to uh apply for grant work in pre-apprenticeship programs. Um, that's work that we're already researching and finding opportunities for. There's a lot of partnerships with community organizations around workforce development that could be realized as well. That would result in funding streams and grants. Um, and so the potential there is also very big for us to realize additional funding sources. Um, there's also now that we have identified pathways and academies, if if approved to move forward. We can start to target particular CTE grants for particular pathways. Um, so if there's. Specific needs, we can start to build those pathways and seek grant funding that are are tailored particularly to those things. Um, and those interests. Um, lastly, I will just say that um there is a lot of interest from our business community around sponsorship and in-kind donations as well. And so there's a revenue potential there as well. Some communities choose to sponsor their academies from businesses. That could potentially lead to revenue streams for us down the road. Um, and so I, as you see there in other communities across the country, uh when they really have an active system. They see um upwards of five million dollars a year from their business community investing in this work annually. And so lastly, I would just say that we are doing a lot of work internally with our budget. This is becoming the new system. We're not adding a program. Um, we're creating a new system. And so we're really restructuring our budget internally around Carl Perkins. Around some of our Title IV grant funding, around a lot of other grant grant federal grant funding that we get. Um, and even our general fund so that this system is supported um and we're reusing our allocated resources really um effectively. So that is phase three of our funding looking ahead. Um, so I know that um I've been talking a long time. I'm almost to the end. Um, but I I just wanted to shift to our third transformation category, which is transferring partnerships between schools and communities. I touched on it earlier in the presentation that we've had a huge amount of community buy-in. Um, and participation in this process. Uh, we have a a robust steering committee that's really active right now um from many of our key businesses. And um workforce development folks in town and UAA. We've had a lot of tactic team participation, um folks coming to our community convenings. Um, and and like I said, we had a huge response rate for our student and parent surveys. We have already had investments from some of our partners. Um, the United Way, which is our our major partner in the work on the community side. Has already invested in a position. They've hired an Academies of Anchorage specialist. And she's currently uh working with us as a team um in doing a lot of the planning work. So United Way is sponsoring that position. That's not out of the ASD budget. Additionally, UAA has hired an Assistant Vice Provost position that's really focused on working not only with Anchorage. But other districts across the state to increase dual credit opportunities. And so that position has already been funded by UAA and is really supporting this effort as well. And the MOA just recently um let us know that they would like to help sponsor the Freshman Career Academy Expo. So um they are looking to donate um the rental of the Denine Center for us so that we don't have to pay for that. And then in addition to some other things um associated with the event. So that's a huge cost savings for the district. But um our partners and our community are really stepping up to to the plate to invest in this system um with us. So there's lots of opportunity moving ahead through um developing advisory boards at each of our high schools. Um, to really uh beef up that uh work-based learning at the high school level. Our industry councils, um King Tech currently has industry councils for some of their pathways. We want to expand that to a district-wide system where we really have our industry professionals advising us on. The the teachings and the learning going on within our particular pathways and really um use their expertise. Um, so there's a lot of other continual outreach and and opportunities for us as we look ahead. So I just wanted to take a minute to come back to this slide to show you the numbers of folks that have been involved. We've we've done a number of presentations. We've had four community convenings. We've had um huge amount of hours of our business folks and our community members really dedicated to that work. We've had almost six thousand or more hours um put into the tactic teams that are going to be a part of the. The master plan that you see at the next board meeting. Um, and like I said, we've had over ten thousand survey respondents from our parents and students. And so um our educators have also been part of this en- engagement. So that might be one of the questions is how are we engaging our teachers and our educators? And and they have been invited to be a part of tactic teams and community convenings as well as internal meetings that we've we've gone to. Um, Cindy and I personally visited every high school staff this year more more than once. Um, to really dive into the work um internally as well. So just to give you a snapshot of some of the folks that are involved in this work, this is only a short list of folks um from across our. Community, but it sometimes you see the numbers and you don't really know what that who who those people are. So I wanted to give you a list of some of the organizations that are engaged with us. Um, through attending convenings or participating in tactic teams or we've given presentations. Um, and and we really tried to do a wide swath of our community around this outreach work. Um, not just your traditional businesses, if you will. We wanted to reach all corners of our community. And all different types of people in our community. And so we really did a good um comprehensive outreach effort. And like I said earlier, we even have one of our tactic teams that solely focused on family and community engagement. So that we're really um moving alongside our community, not doing it to them. So, um, so the last two slides, I just, I I know it's been a long presentation, so I appreciate your patience. But I wanted to really outline for the board. Um, not only the work that's ahead, but where your decision points are as a board. Um, because I know that this is a really intricate transformation and sometimes hard to track all the different points. So we're here today um at the work session. At our next work session, um you will um ahead of of that work session have received the master plan. That includes all of those tactic plans for preview. So it is a fairly dense document. I wanted to give the board ample time to really be able to review that um with enough time before the May twenty-first meeting. So this team will be here again to walk you through the highlights of that master plan um and and give you the opportunity to ask those questions. And we're happy to um talk individually too as well if you have questions. Um, on June fourth, we would ask for you to adopt that master plan. And that master plan is not necessarily a binding document. It is a a large over. Like it it's essentially a strategic plan around the academies of Anchorage. And so at any point, the board retains the decisions to um control the budget, make decisions that are hard if needed. But by adopting that strategic plan, it lets the community and the internal ASD team know that we're ready to. Continue to execute that plan and move ahead with the planning. Um, so after um potential adoption of the master plan. Over the summer, there's a lot of preparatory work to do to be ready to launch those freshman academies. We'll be doing professional. Professional development over the summer. We'll be starting to stand up industry councils and advisory boards. Um, it to advise us in the launch of our career academies and that work that's ahead. Um, we'll also be looking at the grant writing that I talked about um in the phase three funding. Um, and we will start the schedule committee work um to talk about the schedule change. And so um the other part of our summer work is that there is a process with Ford Next Generation Learning. That's called a designation process where they really evaluate our plan and make sure it's in line with um the Ford NGL guidelines. Because there is a designation process for for the district. So looking towards the fall, once the scheduling committee work has concluded, we will bring that recommendation forward to the board. Um, so that there is really good awareness of what the recommendation from that committee is moving forward ahead of the budget process. That way you know um that the the committee has made this recommendation and that that is going to be a part of the budget process moving forward. Um, if we're we're all in sync. Um, we will also launch freshman academy. Um, we will engage in the the designation process in September. Um, where Ford representatives will be here to designate us formally as a Ford NGL district. Um, and we'll continue to do our professional development as the year goes on. So going to the next slide. Um, in the winter, we will evaluate those additional FTE as a part of the budget process and the schedule change. And so that's really a decision um that the board gets to make as a part of their budget development process. Uh, if a schedule change is approved through the budget. Then it will trigger a graduation requirements conversation. And so some of these things may be happening a little bit concurrently as we move through the process. When we ha- if we move to a six-of-eight schedule and we have those additional requirements around a career academy course. We would look to be adding some of those requirements to the graduation um requirements for students. Uh, so that they're required to take that freshman career academy course, uh exploration course. And then they're also required to take um additional CTE credits or career academy classes as a part of their graduation experience. So and those, so those recommendations for graduation requirements would then come back to the board either in late winter or spring. So that we um can have that community conversation. And we can potentially include those new requirements as a part of the next freshman class in the fall of twenty-five. So and then looking ahead to next summer, we'll continue to do professional development with teachers. But we'll also be really launching teacher externships so they get to know um the industry for the academy that they're a part of. And they can um tailor their teaching towards that industry a little bit better because they've seen the work. Uh, um, and we'll continue to work with industry councils, working on curriculum alignment as a part of that. Um, and there's, there's a lot of of continual planning that will continue to happen at that summer. Um, and then hopefully all goes well, we will be launching our second freshman academy that fall of twenty-five. And our first career academy cohort um with our sophomores in the fall of twenty-five. So I wanted to just um provide the context of the planning and how those decision points for the board come into play. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, uh, member Higgins. I'll see you, Mike.
Thank you. Uh, uh, I appreciate the presentation and the and the uh, uh, just one question. Uh, feedback from staff. I mean, the the change in the scheduling uh is obviously going to be something monitored by staff. And you're gonna get feedback on that as well. I mean, we dealt with that once before.
Right.
Uh, with the seven schedule. And even though it showed that it would be supportive, it would be beneficial, but only if you had buy-in.
Right.
And I guess this is probably the same type of situation a little bit. I'm wondering what type of feedback you got, what type of concerns are being raised in regards to implementation of that type of schedule change.
So um we're we're still at the beginning of the schedule discussion. There has been a lot of discussion this year speculating about a schedule change. Um, and so there's mixed reviews there. I would say some teachers are supportive and some teachers are not. Just might, like you have probably seen um in other schedule discussions that we've had in this district. Um, as we move forward in the schedule change process, part of part of the work of the committee is really evaluating all the different needs. Of stakeholders, teachers being a big part of that. Um, and prov- and providing a schedule recommendation that can can really be recommended, not only by teachers, but by the administration and others as well. Um, so we would, we would work with AEA and others to make sure that the right stakeholders are at the table um for that discussion. But um any schedule change is gonna have supporters and detractors for sure. Um, it people, people really do get ingrained in that schedule.
What what's a primary concern by those opposed to it? I know this is increasing the number of classes people are taking. That has a. A volume workload, right? At the same time, we're having trouble filling teacher positions. So I understand that aspect of it. Is there any other issue or concern that's being raised that? So we just, I I'm very supportive of the academies and going what we're doing, but I just want to be upfront that we've heard. From the concerns and that we understand why.
Yeah, I think um workload is one of them for sure. Um, there's also, like you mentioned. Um, but also to member lessons pointing earlier about loss of instruction time, when you add more periods in the day. You do have less time to do that and you do gain some of that back with the um reduction in transitions, but you don't get all of it back. Um, but what you are able to do is support students differently. So rather than providing all of those su- supports in one particular period, you you can. I I like to use the example of math because that tends to be a subject that lots of students struggle with. It in a typical Algebra One class, you may have students that are very gifted at algebra and don't need the extra time and can sail right through. But you may have students that struggle and those students that struggle could be paired with an additional support math class that goes with their algebra class. And then essentially they actually get more math instruction that way. So it's looking at how we're instructing our kids a little bit differently as opposed to cramming it all in one period. But loss of instruction time is the other major concern that I've heard when we're talking about a schedule change.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, let's go with Member Wilson and then Member Lessons.
So comment and and a question. I've been, I've had the pleasure of participating on the steering committee. I've had the pleasure of being on our school business partnership board for, gosh, twenty three years now. And being a school business partner as well as a school board member. And over those years, I've, I've learned how it used to be really difficult as a business to try to, as I've heard, break into the district to to help and to be a part of it. And what I'm hearing now from so many of our community businesses, partners, nonprofits, that they're very excited about the academy's work. Actually was at our school business partnership luncheon and one of our partners in conversation, and I'd never heard this before, said it shouldn't be up to just our teachers to make sure that our students are prepared for their next steps. It should be up to the community and community partners to help with that. And I've never heard that in over twenty years that I've always advocated for school business partnerships. So I'm very excited about how our community partners have stepped up. All that are participating in the tactic teams, I've been to the community convenings when there's three hundred people in the room. And it's, it's our students, our educators, our community partners. All lumped in together to have these discussions. So that's all very exciting. Our, I just appreciate all the work that our community is doing to step in and how at this point in time, they feel welcome, which is incredibly important to me. I do have a couple of questions. One of them, if we have time, but one of them is I know we had talked, actually, I toured one of the high schools and talked to, had the opportunity to talk to a couple of teachers. And one of them struck me, one of the conversations really struck me because he said, you know, I, I want the opportunity and I love the opportunity to teach kids at the basic level to to expose them to different, you know, industries within the the class he's teaching. And he said, what I would love to see is for King Tech to provide the capstone courses. So that I can teach my kids, all of my students, my kids, but all of my students about the different possibilities, different industries, the basic skills for for what he was teaching. And then for them to move on to King Tech to teach the more intricate and more advanced levels. Is that part of what the discussion is, is happening or?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, Member Wilson. So yes, that's part of the next phase of planning. So we have really robust programs at King Tech. Some of those programs over will likely overlap as we start to develop all the different pathways with some of the work at King Tech. So there's a number of options moving ahead. One is that, like I said earlier, there are facilities at King Tech that we can't replicate in our home high schools. So there are programs such as the auto maintenance program that I referenced earlier that will likely need to stay as as is, right? Because we don't have an auto body shop at every high school. But there are other opportunities where students may get that introduction at their home high school. Really be passionate about a particular subject or industry and be able to go into a capstone experience at King Tech where they're able to take it to that next level. And that's part of the beauty of being partnered with UAA and the Career Technical Education College there. And then all of the industry partnerships that King Tech robustly has developed over the years. Where if they are ready to go into that apprenticeship and there's a partnership, they're able to just really dive in for that capstone experience early. And and maybe it is still their senior year, but they will have that opportunity. So as we move forward in the planning work, the next phase of planning is really to stand up that alignment work that needs to happen with King Tech and what those capstones look like now that we have the identified academies. So.
Okay, you have a follow up?
And the other question is currently King Tech has a half, I mean, the students go their half day. So would that be the continued process?
Potentially.
Eight classes versus six?
Yeah, potentially. The schedule would likely look a little bit different, especially if we're on an eight-period AB schedule. So it would likely look like you go to King Tech for two full days or three full days, depending on the AB block schedule for the day. Because if you look at the schedule, it's periods one through four on A days and periods four through or five through eight on B days. So our schedule would likely have to shift to you spend a day at King Tech. And then you come to your home high school on the next day. And then you go back to King Tech as an alternating pattern as opposed to the half day. But it would still equate to roughly half of your credits that you're taking as a student. The thing I will say about that particular shift as a cost efficiency is we spend a lot of money on transportation to and from the high schools twice a day in the half day model. So by going to that AB block schedule, you would eliminate a lot of bus routes in the middle of the day around lunchtime as a transition. And that money could be channeled to a different space. But the answer is you would still spend about half of your schedule at King Tech. It would just look a little different.
Okay, let's take one more question, Member Lessons, and then we, we want to shift a little bit of time to start time.
All right, this might be a compound question. Okay, so I'm not excited about the FY twenty six deficit. That's out there, it's more than ninety million dollars. And what may or may not happen in Juno is not going to close that gap from what I can tell. So that's like the background.
Sure.
So again, thank you for all of this work and all of the information. I guess part of my question is, what will be a thirty additional teachers across eight comprehensive high schools? What will they be doing? I mean, my sense is I'm guessing we have eight or nine hundred high school teachers. So that's a small percentage increase overall in our capacity. So what, what are their roles going to be? And where is a three and a half million dollar investment in those thirty people going to come from in the context of our FY twenty six deficit? And have more conversational questions, but I guess that'll leave it there for the moment.
Well, sure, I, I think it's a great question. It's what a lot of people are wondering about. And the first part around the thirty, around the thirty FTE. So those teachers would be all sorts of different types of teachers, honestly, depending on the the school. Some would be CTE courses because we're clearly standing up quite a few other CTE pathways or expanding those pathways that are already present. So some of them would become CTE teachers, but not all of them. So some of them may just be English teachers or math teachers. But essentially the the FTE difference and and they asked by the board and FY FY twenty six is that in order to have that six of eight schedule, we need some additional teachers to cover that academy planning time that's built into that schedule. And that academy time is really critical to have all the positive effects of having that team of support around a student. And that interdisciplinary teaming that has to happen within the academy. So it would really be an investment in the schedule and in order to make that six of eight schedule work.
So I think, I guess the follow up is that it sounds like it's analogous to the middle school model, investment in staffing. Okay, that's, that's helpful for understanding.
Yes, it's very similar.
I've spent a little bit of time trying to understand what the personnel investment is like in the Akron and Nashville schools. And, you know, first from hearsay, from folks coming back and reporting, boy, they have a lot of people in their schools. And then just looking at the budgets that I could find. Their spend, you know, North High School in Akron, their FY twenty three expenditures per people are twenty one, more than twenty one thousand dollars. That's significantly more than anything we're doing at any of our comprehensive high schools. They have about half the number of people's per total certificated FTE that that we do. So I guess, I don't, I'm putting my hands to my face. It's a full body experience here. This makes me nervous, like I don't know how to get around that. It's exciting. And also I, I don't see how, like if you had told me it would cost three and a half million dollars per high school, I would have been like, okay. I get what that scale of investment needs to be. And I would have believed it. And I'm, I guess I just find it hard to believe that we can do what we're hoping to do with, we have a generous grant. There's a potential of future funding, but I just don't see how we're connecting. I don't see how we're really going to be able to fund it, to the extent they need to be funded, I think.
So Dr. Bryant, do you have a comment?
I, I did. Well, I was going to answer your second question, which was around the FY twenty six development process. And it would be that same process that we go through with the board over multiple months of weighing the, the value of multiple different programs and options. And the board will always have the autonomy to consider things such as PTR or fund balance or other programs. And we'll come to that consensus as a full board. So I wouldn't put that on Dr. Johnson to answer today. But what we are saying is that this investment of three point five million dollars is directly aligned to goal three on the CCL. So I truly believe that this program design will increase graduation rates, the CT completion, and will make the learning relevant enough to see that increase in GPA that we're striving for. So as a board, we have to figure out what are we going to prioritize to make that three point five million dollars worth that investment? But we really need to earn that support and that's part of the process that we're going through today.
Okay, so we'll be back here next, at our next meeting. Thank you guys for great, I mean, you guys have done just awesome work with this. And it is exciting and the community is very excited. So I, I haven't been this excited about anything since middle school. Just saying, just saying. Anyway, we, we do have, I'd let the record show that Member Donley joined us about four fifteen, I believe. And the next on the, on schedule, a little bit of conversation, we have about twenty minutes to talk about. We can extend, can we do the first fifteen, twenty? Maybe we'll get it done in twenty. You don't think so? Okay, all right. So we've got to start the conversation and there is a request that if we, if necessary, we can extend to five fifteen. Any objections to extending if we need to? All right. So Dr. Bryant?
All right. So topic number two is school start time. So it's been a few months since we've last engaged the board on this topic. And in that time, we've put a lot of work into various items, everything from sports to working with our partnerships for childcare to what times will schools be opening? So a lot of the questions that have been bubbling in the community, we hope to address or at least provide a path forward with today's brief presentation followed by Q and A. So with that, we'll let our team have a second to transition and then Mr. Gustafson and team will kick it off.
All right, good afternoon. And we have a few of us up here today to talk about start times. We do have, you know, have a lot of time, so I'm going to go through some of the slides that we have kind of quickly because we're going to do a little recap of how we got to where we are today. And then talk about the work we've done this school year and some plans that we have for going into next school year. So just to kind of a reminder of why, why we would be changing start times. Sorry. So then start times, this is the stuff that we came up with at the last school year, new start times aligned with students' natural sleep patterns. Research indicates students will see an increase in alertness, improved cognitive functionality, increased memory retention, improved focus in the classroom, as well as attendance rates going up and absences going down, as well as for those students who drive will be more rested and more alert traveling to and from their campuses. Some timelines as to how we got to where we are between twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. Anchorage School District researched and solicited input regarding school start times. Ultimately, start times were not adopted at that time. Fast forward to September twenty second and twenty twenty two, a board member requested the following, discerning whether Anchorage Secretary of Students proficiency and ELA in math is adversely affected by our seven thirty and eight fifteen start times. For to answer that, in the board connect on September twenty third, there was an answer to that question as well as four links to different studies around start times. So if you go back to that board connect on September twenty third, you can see that research that was provided to you. Fast forward to January, right after we got through with doing a lot of the stuff, talking around school closures and budgets and everything. A presentation was delivered to the school board by Western Demographics and also a visit from Dr. Meltzer via Zoom, who's a, who is a doctor who is really involved with start time research. That presentation is linked on to your, your, your document that you all received. Also, at that meeting, we were tasked by the school board to gather information regarding start times and make a recommendation. March twenty first is when we came back to you during a work session. We have a presentation also linked to the, to your, to your, the show, the slideshow for today. And then through from February through April of twenty twenty three, there were fourteen focus groups, three town hall meetings, numerous interviews with medical professionals. And nine thousand nine hundred and twenty six surveys were received. I also linked the survey results PowerPoint that was shared with you during that time, which showed the results from not only the survey, but also the results from some of the town, focus groups and town hall meetings. Then April eighteenth, there was a non-action item for the memo for school start time changes with the recommendation. And then ultimately on May ninth of last year, you adopted new school start times for implementation during the twenty four, twenty five school year. So what has happened since then? Kind of planning for the change, there's been a lot of things that have occurred. Communications campaign to inform the community. Missing some of these flyers, I've seen them in almost all of the schools, like actually all the schools I've been through. But there's been a lot of planning and prepping along the adjustment of bus routes. Mr. Anderson will talk about those here in a little bit. We also planned and prepped around mealtimes because of the change in start times and the laws around federal student lunches, we had to work around that. We engaged maintenance and IT because there's a lot of things that you have to do in the buildings when you change your start times. We ensured the municipalities aware, makes changes to impact traffic, improve student safety. Example being they're changing the flashing lights and making sure other lights are on to the walking areas. And then we've coordinated the impact of school start changes with programs such as after school care and student activities. And we're going to kind of go into some of that work now and we'll start with, we'll start with Mr. Visti, who's the Senior Director of Elementary Education, talking about the after school work.
Good afternoon. So for our work that we did this year, there was an opportunity to partner with the Alaska After School Action Network. That they serve a, the after school programs, largely the YCA, the Boys and Girls Club. But they also do some of our smaller programs and support the smaller programs and getting the word out and networking after childcare for, for families such as like the Rabbit Creek Center and a few others in addition to that. So it was multi-departments. We had our Title I department, Twenty First Century Elementary Education myself. We had conversations with middle school, the rentals department and communications all came together, working with our after school providers and the networks to be able to have conversations regarding the needs that are coming from both the Anchorage School District as well as from the providers to be intentional with how we want to support each other and help families through this, through this change next year. Some of the communication, some of the results really came into more communication across all these different groups. We didn't have that previous to this year. So there was some positive gains through that. And then also the coordination of communication, so leveraging resources to be able to have more and better communication for families to know, how can I provide access care? So for example, when we had our alternate school expo over at Begich, we invited the after school network to come there. So when families were looking at what kind of services or what kind of care providers were at those schools, there was someone right there with expertise to be able to talk to them. Out of our fifty seven elementary schools, currently we have thirty one schools that have childcare, after school childcare programming there. We anticipate those thirty ones to be there next year too. And we are hearing that there may be an expansion of potentially up to two more sites for next year that are being considered by those programs. So that, that could be a positive benefit. So that that could be a positive benefit. Um, some of the things, topics that we talked about, we're reviewing the staffing needs that they had. Uh, we, we went through and had conversations about transportation, the nutrition aspects. So if we start a little bit earlier in the elementary schools, you know, students might get a little bit more hungry in the afternoon, so on and so forth. And then communication and partnering um through our website and other sources and flyers going out to schools and families, um as well as the needs that they had and topics that they had to help address that.
I do wanna just reemphasize what he did say, that we do not have before and after-school care in a number of our schools currently. Um, and so it isn't gonna be in every school moving forward as well. So hopefully we'll get more of those programs going. All right, for our drop-off times, um that's been a big thing of when do, when can we drop off our kiddos? Um, um due to early start times in elementary, um we're not anticipating extra time before school. And the after-school network really isn't gonna be setting up programs before school. Um, because of the early time, um typically, students can get dropped off fifteen minutes prior to the school day. Um, and then elementary schools will continue to provide morning supervision during PLC time on Mondays, which will be from eight to nine next school year. For middle school, um students can be dropped off uh starting at eight thirty AM, which is an hour ahead of time, Monday through Friday, including on late start times. Um, high schools would be looking at being able to be dropped off at seven forty-five, Monday through Friday, including that that PLC late start time. Um, some people have asked, well, who's watching the kids? Well, in middle and high school, we do have security. Um, during that time, we also have some, uh, you know, we, we have substitutes in the schools. But security will be the big um group of people that would be working and while watching the students on, at the middle and high schools. Now, that is not going to be a robust, like, we're gonna do a ton of different types of activities. That will be a place where kids can come in, they can do some reading, they can get their breakfast from the um breakfast program and and so forth.
We have a question, member Donley.
What's our current policy about children waiting for the normal admission time? People come, kids that come early, when especially during bad weather, when it's really cold.
I, you mean like timing or anything like?
Yeah, I mean, you say you can drop them off at seven forty-five.
I, I don't know of any middle or high schools that um keep the kids outside of the schools. They don't, they allow them to come into the multipurpose room or something, yeah. We don't, we don't want schools keeping them outside when it's cold, we want them to get in and.
I wish, I wish you were in charge when I was at Central.
That's, yeah.
Come on.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, do you wanna take the?
Sure. So there are some increased transportation requirements for King Tech due to the school start times. Um, we're currently working two potential, well, very likely options that will help free up transportation resources, um not just for this next year, but as we look at um new requirements and out years as students may or may not, and small numbers be going to different schools. So more to follow after we get through discussions with um these vendors.
Okay, and it still has the same kind of issues around busing and stuff like that. So um you can see that on the presentation. Moving on to student activities, uh, there's gonna be change in transportation needs, change in activity schedules, impact of practice times in community. And I've asked Holly Zumbro, who works primarily with student supports, and she is gonna kind of walk us through the plans that we have, especially with these fall sports that are first up.
Member Lass.
I wish she um seen this. Um, I think one of the working ideas I had in my mind was that if this schedule change, having elementary get out earlier would free up a significant number of buses, right? Elementary uses most number of buses more than um middle school or high school. And therefore, um secondary sports would not necessarily have to wait until a large number of elementary students got out at the end of the day. So I guess what I'm hearing is a little bit different than what I had heard some number of months ago. Mr. Anderson can answer.
That's a good question. Um, King Tech, when they added thirteen new bus routes, it took away a lot of the flexibility we had. Uh, we've also started getting some notices of resignation, so we're not tracking a massive outflow. Um, although we do know the tourist season is starting earlier than before. Um, in fact, during graduation week, premier camp support with buses, because there's two ships coming in, and they've extended tourist season um well into September. So um that's why we're working two other opportunities uh to provide some more flexibility in our transportation, but those aren't locked yet. Uh, and they may grow over time, so um we really wanted to be cautious and provide some stability for family members to make plans. And on this particular schedule, we're very confident this time.
We also need to remember that we added a third more students to all of our middle, to those other seven middle schools, so that includes another third or buses for the sixth graders probably. So that all happens at the same time.
Okay, um, so whereas this fall, I was just looking down the schedules, cross-country running, basketball. It's all two thousand twenty-three started at five forty-five, five thirty. We're a little bit later, not necessarily because of the start time changes, but because of some other structural.
The, the structural thing with, the structural thing with the King Tech buses is because of start times. Because we have, because of the way elementary, it's, it's a huge complex problem with the buses, I'll tell you. That Heather Filp is, I think, gone all gray, I'm just talking about King Tech buses. Um, but there's, it's a huge deal where that, there's so many more buses that we have to have because of the fact that my high school is right in the middle. Instead of on one end of the upper. And that, either we do that or we can only have one session at King Tech. So it is because, it is because of the start times change that those King Tech buses are.
And, sorry, this is the third, for the third session.
This is for just having the first, second session.
Second session.
Yes.
Um, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Just curious if, if we, um, I understand the lots of new routes related to change, um, I have later in my day, if this stand a reason that if we backed up our current order of a half hour, that those challenges would exist? And then what's the cost in terms of finances related to bus routes?
So if I understand your question, you're just asking if we keep the order we're talking about a half an hour earlier or later, it would still, it'd still be the same. If we go elementary, high school, middle school, and still have the same issue, because we still need to be able to get the kids there to put those courses. Yeah, what, what's the, the financial implication for those extra King Tech bus routes?
Um, each bus route, it's gonna be twice a day for the King Tech buses. Um, each bus route costs about, I think, at the beginning of the year, about a hundred and five to a hundred and eight thousand per route. Um, but we, we have uh some options we're looking at that might provide reduced rate transportation costs for some students. And so it's, it's a little premature for me right now to talk about it since we're in negotiations, uh but I will later. Uh, once we have it solidified and, and, you know, we'll do the math and see if, if we break even or save funds.
Just a, a quick follow-up, um, it gets addressed later in the slide deck, but um curious if we could as a, as a, the administration's thoughts about supporting that starting at six o'clock, uh like, is that what's our level of comfortability there? Obviously, it's the plan, but um what isn't on the slide deck, maybe it was addressed briefly, is this, the administration was happy to support the decision. Um, and I would appreciate that, to be clear for the record, but this was a work-driven addition. So I wanna make sure I'm checking to, to see for a level of comfortability um with the plan. Thanks.
So I, I, I would like Zumbro to be able to answer kind of what she's hearing from her side. What I would say is that we are, there are a number of different activities that we're having to change our model from. Or because of the start times, um putting volleyball, happen to go instead of one night, practices at a specific school, happen to change and put C team on another night compared to the JV and varsity. So there are some structural changes that we've had to make. I'm sure that there's gonna be issues come up as we get into different things, but Holly, you wanna kind of give your take on that?
Sure. Member Jacobs. The um, the middle school, we choose shifts as the lessons put out right out of the team's schedule. Because they haven't had infected buses available to them. And the same thing happens as. Pointed out with volleyball, they have to change the structure entirely, so it's set at five o'clock, six fifteen, second thirty. Jim, we go starting at six o'clock, it's hard to stay them for, they go six o'clock, seven fifteen. That, um, some folks are having a little bit of a difficult time. But just for that, then having, having seen it roll out, that's happening. Uh, but it's entirely impossible to put a bus. So that's a bit of a, same way with having. Okay. If you have a question.
Holly, were you done? Did you wanna go through the?
We can go, we still have some more slides here.
Yeah. So with, to the high school, there, thank you. A note on all of these slides at the top for high school and the school on the goal there's often. And that goes to the document we've created to send out to our schools, where they can take this information, or just high school, just for middle school, a little bit more details on practices and such, and add their specific information for their school in order to then send it out to their communities. So here you have the first set of high school sports. High school is a little bit different because those dates are dictated by the OSAS, not the State Activities Association. So each school will have just different practice times, and that varies at the high school level because of the various coaches. An in-building coach will typically start right after school, and we have a coach that's typically building, they typically start a little bit later. So for every student's activity, they'll need to just reach out to their old school. On the thirty-first of July, these are the activities that we start. First competition they can have is August fifteenth. That doesn't mean we're all gonna have a competition on August fifteenth, that's even the first date that OSAS. Every one of our activities is scheduled to start, sorry, our events at six P M. On the next slide, you see that the, the next group of activities begins on the seventh, and their first competition opportunity is August twenty-second. Gymnastics is potentially going to be outsourced, we are in the midst of conversation and a contract there. When we have that finalized, you will, you will know. We've talked a little bit about girls volleyball, and we'll talk a little bit more about swim and dive in a moment, but I do wanna note that Riley Lee is also first quarter start, and it begins September fourth, which first competition in September.
And as you look at each of those sports that she's talked about thus far, all of them, other than swim and dive, are facilities that we mostly control.
So we worked, um, I met with Mr. Anderson and the municipality, Catherine Green was also in the room, and we talked about the constraints of lifeguards, the constraints of staffing rules. Because the last thing we want to have happen is one of our facilities have to be closed because of staffing. It's a facility issue, we will embrace that, we will work through it. At first staffing issue, it's not something that we want to have to encounter. Um, it's just not equitable to our students in the way that it ran last year. So we would like to not repeat that. To that end, with the municipality, they have, we have arranged this schedule where we will have AM practices, where they will have one municipality-certified lifeguard present. We've also, Mr. Anderson has worked with David's Risk Management, and she is at the US to the schedule as well. With there being only one municipal lifeguard, we were insistent that the doors to the facility would be locked, so that no one other than the athletes coming in for practice would be inside. They assured me that they always lock the locker room doors, but I don't want students exiting the locker room to find someone having wandered in, fallen asleep in an entryway. I just don't wanna run the risk. Therefore, we're requesting that for the AM practices, the doors to the facility will be locked, students will be let in. The student rises, which will arrange how to make them, how to get them in, they all text each other to let no one here. So those, those AM practices, it would happen at the Bartlett pool for the Bartlett team and the Diamond pool for the Diamond team. Afternoon practices would have two certified lifeguards. That would be at the Betty Davis East School and the West Pool, and the Betty Davis East School is also situated, so the dive practice would happen there. That would be collaborated and coordinated with the dive coaches, because the dive practice would happen simultaneously along with swim practice, as I've been instructed. And the important thing to note there is the municipality said for dive practice to happen, there has to be two certified lifeguards present. So that's where the divers are limited to an afternoon-only option, unless they're doing a lap swim kind of practice. And we have two pools where we will rotate schedules. They'll have the Chupiaque pool and the service pool have both AM and PM practices. The AM again with one municipal certified lifeguard and the PM with two. What will happen there is for Chupiaque, we will alternate Chupiaque and Eagle River. One, one team will have the AM and the other will have the PM, the hell, we can then rotate and switch. The same will happen with the service pool, as it shares the service and the five teams. To that end, in the past, the river has prior driven to Bartlett for swim practice. In order to try to have them not travel into Bartlett on the highway with the early morning traffic, and having them instead go out to the Chupiaque, they're going the opposite way of most of the morning traffic, as well as the afternoon traffic, and then be able to make that move back toward town, um, back to Eagle River, that morning traffic, so that we're just trying to keep them off the busy part of the highway with all of the extra traffic they could be there. So this was what we have come to arrange and what we've shared with the municipality and honestly built the collaboration with.
Questions? So does this, against the swim, the swim um schedule does answer the questions we've been getting in the emails?
We think so.
All right, thanks.
The swim one is the hardest one.
Yes.
Sure.
So um, and that would be one certified lifeguard at both sites. What, you know, like if there's two schools there, there's, there'd be one at each.
At every AM site, yes.
Member Lass. Um, is transportation provided for students from Eagle River going to Chupiaque, or I guess south point of service, or students, their families responsible for that, if like practices that far off thing?
They, they've always had, in the south doesn't have a.
Okay, they're always offsite.
Yeah.
But so, so ASU is not providing transportation for any of these practices? Hey, member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so just a, a quick question first. Has the information we just received about practices and schedules disseminated to stakeholders? disseminated to stakeholders yet?
They have not, because we wanted to get them in front of you first.
Um, and then I wanted to, to come full circle, really, take it just one more time, you know? This is a board initiative. We have a lot going on over the next school year, sixth of middle. Um, academies, uh, now, school start times, and we're, um, fighting my catch for resources, legislature too. Just wanted to recognize that, one, and then, two, does it, if, if the board would ask administration for a recommendation, do we still feel comfortable with, you know, we're holding out this plan? Is this the best option for students right now? Um, I ask because we've had community stakeholders say that there's more modest tweaks we could make, which may cause less complications, um. You combine the fact that we have these other initiatives going on, and so, uh, wanna make sure that we're aligned as an administration as well, too.
Uh, through the president, member Jacobs, that's an excellent question. I would like to remind the board that this was not the first time that school start times was considered, um, in fact, uh, there were very advanced conversations that happened in twenty eighteen. And I think there are a lot of great reasons, and over and over again, it seems that it's been considered that start times are a lever to improve mental health and student outcomes, and I believe that that's the reason why the board ultimately chose to go down this path. And we've invested many hours of time and thought into it. I would say that the board was very wise to provide a runway of a year to figure out a lot of the mechanics that we discussed today, but I would like to hear from board members, um, before we provide additional insight. I believe that we have a plan that will lead to success next year, but I think the why was very fundamental to our philosophies as a board. So I think that's a much bigger question. But on a more practical consideration, back in twenty eighteen, the board had considered a modest adjustment of just pushing back the times thirty minutes. I will remind the board that we discussed this in April of twenty twenty-three. And one of the concerns that was raised about that model, which we did deliberate as a board, is that it involves a lot of the changes that we're talking about. Not all of them, but some of them, but it did not have all the benefits, um, when it comes to mental health and student support that this model does. Um, in fact, the American Society of Pediatrics recommends a start time of eight-thirty or later for secondary students, and that model did not.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Brenner, I appreciate that, man. Um, I'll have to be clear in that I see the benefits, um. I wa- I was hoping that we'd be farther along with the Proposition Fourteen rollout, and understanding that those ones could be, could begin to be distributed as soon as the summer. Um, I think we'll be farther along here in a year with some additional supports, kind of things, Mr. Justice. That we don't have supplementary, um, after-school, of course, school programs everywhere we would like them, so, uh, I think I'm generally supportive, but I'm also not willing to work. So this has been one of, it's, it's been a while since we've been checking on this topic, and so that was the purpose for my asking. And I appreciate that, and be very interested in hearing from the board members.
Any, any other comments, questions? Well, I think I want to, uh, we, it is now side ten. Not seeing any other questions. I wanna thank you guys for, uh, continuing the work. And, uh, doing that, just, just the overview was really helpful. Uh, because it's been exactly a year ago with this meeting. And we, uh, I remember, I think I voted against, uh, waiting. I wanted to start this year, but I was overruled. So the work, uh, and, and it's good, it's really good that we did take our time. Uh, but change is going to be difficult, and, uh, there will be the unexpected things that will pop up, and you got, we're gonna have to use our best judgment on how we, uh, minimize the impact to kids and, and families. So with that, I will, uh.
President, adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and conference.
Your second? Moved in second, that we move into executive session for the purpose of discussing contracts, legal, and personnel. Uh, is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned into executive session.
Recording stopped.